We do have nine o'clock. This board has been in recess, so I call it, pull us back in into session at this time. And we have two items to continue discussions on, and one of that being employee benefits, I believe. Is it going first?
Yes, it is. Okay.
You're, you're up?
Okay. Well, we are reconvening following the presentations that you received last Monday at your regular meeting. And at your request, you had decided to come back this morning to finish that discussion. So I'm here, and our HR director, Sonya Carver, is here to answer any questions that you may have during your discussion.
Board member, questions at this point? Comments? Okay, I do have a topic on my brain. It's probably, I know it's a moot point at this time. I come up here Friday and ask for the survey comments from the employees. I got a 23 eval and a 24. The 24, I believe, had a listing of 140 or 30 or whatever comments from employees. But I only got 45 of them. And I don't understand what went wrong.
Okay. So the responses that I sent to you were related to benefits. So the survey that we did in this year was the Employee Engagement Survey. So it covered a wide variety of topics, and benefits were only a small portion of that. And there really weren't specific questions related to benefits. But it asked, what are some things that Person County can improve on? What are some things that Person County is doing well? So the comments that I sent were those specifically related to either benefits, insurance, or health, for you to review in the context of this discussion. So we just recently completed that survey, so we've not been fully through the entire survey. The management team has looked at it, HR staff has looked at it. Our next step is to go over it with department heads at our department head retreat in December. And then we'll be sharing the results with the organization, as well as, you know, kind of a report back on what we found through the survey and what, you know, we have worked into kind of a work plan moving forward. So those were the benefits-oriented comments that we're sharing.
Curious if something got accidentally left out.
Right. No, it just was to focus in.
All good. Thank you.
Okay.
And my comments with the county employees that talked to me about the plans, what I'm hearing from them is they're favorable for what HR has presented to us, Mark's plan. So I'm just, that's where I'm at with this. I know there was some discussion about what we possibly could, could be saving or what could down the road. And I know Commissioner Powell was talking with the other company plans about that. But from what I gather and from what I'm getting, I, me personally, I'm going to support staying with the same plan, with the plan we got.
And I've also been in contact with maybe a dozen county employees. Ms. Sonya, will you come up? Now, could you give us, have any employees came to you saying that they are in favor or they don't, they hate the plan that we have now? I mean, what's your experience here in the last couple of months?
I have not had any negative feedback from our employees. If we get into the nuts and bolts of premiums, then you're going to have that feedback because the county currently does not subsidize dependent premiums for our employees. And that's certainly something that we can look at in the upcoming budget season. But other than, no one has complained about coverage that I am aware of in our insurance. And we have had great processing of our claims with Cigna. We transitioned from a previous health plan over to Cigna, and very rarely do we get any issues with claim processing.
Okay, well, thank you for your feedback, and I'm, I'm fine.
Okay.
If you want to sit down and be more comfortable. The only objective in bringing this to the board and seeking some feedback was, as I said previously, two things. What's best for our employees, the best coverage. And also, on the other side of the aisle would be cost savings to the county. And that was a major, major concern. And I did hand out a, to the board members as well as the manager, a one-sheet comparison that I made comparing Person County to Rockingham County, and which is similar data. And in there, they showed a significant difference in, in a couple of categories. And that was part of things like maybe dental might have been one. Employee and children benefits was another, but there were two or three in there, that there was a significant out-of-pocket cost to Person County employees. However, based on what, what other board members have heard and what I have heard as well, if they're satisfied with that plan and they're paying out of pocket, then I'm, I'm fine with it as well. Again, it's all about our employees because they are the boots on the ground for service trap people, and that's their desire. I'm fine with that as well. So thank you for all of your research and what you did to get some facts on the table there, and so I'm, I'm well. Any other feedback? Okay, Mr. Turner, we need a motion here.
You do, sir.
Sir, so do we have a motion regarding this employee benefit plan?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the plan that has been presented by the HR.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carried. And Madam Clerk, you did note the absence of Commissioner Prey here.
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay, he's, he's excused this morning anyway. Okay, the next item we want to get some information and feedback on is the fleet management program by Enterprise. If you want to lead us in that.
Yes, I will. So we have Devin and Garrett here from Enterprise. We have been working with Devin from the beginning of this endeavor to shift our fleet management program over to Enterprise, which we did effective July 1st. And then, and I'm sorry, Garrett is a regional representative from Enterprise. I'll allow both of them to introduce themselves to you all. But they've been working closely with our General Services Director, Ray Bouchi, who's here, as well as our Finance Director, Tracy Clayton, who is here as well. So we're all here to answer any questions that y'all may have or provide any feedback from the staff perspective as far as the program this year.
Okay, and the other gentleman, what's his name?
Garrett.
Garrett?
Yes.
And Garrett, are you the new Person County rep?
Uh, no, sir, I'm not. I'm an area, I'm an area manager.
Area, so then do we have a different person as a local?
We have a new account manager, whom Ray and Tracy have both met with, as well as Garrett here recently. They've had a couple of meetings to transition over to our new account manager. And I'm sure that Garrett would be able to provide some additional information to you on that.
His name is Tyler Dean. He had a family obligation today that he could not make it. Otherwise, he would be here.
Well, well, if we, whatever your wishes are here to get us started.
Are they going to, I just, I just want to, my question, being that some concerns are brought up, is, is Enterprise living up to their obligation that we agreed to when we first started this program? And if not, if there's any shortcomings or anything of that nature, I'd like to know what they are and what the plans are to fix it.
Sure. So I can provide you with a brief summary. The board did consider this program prior to the budget process last year, and then formally approved it, implementation of it during the budget process. So as far as ordering vehicles, we did not get those orders in as early in the ordering cycle as we would going forward because we had not had a final decision on moving forward with the program. So the ordering did not get in as early. So going forward, we would expect to have our orders in earlier in the process with earlier delivery dates in the fiscal year. So we are still waiting on many of the vehicles, and they can speak to you as far as the ordering timeline and what we should expect moving forward. So I know that's been the biggest hurdle for departments is not having the vehicles, which has been a problem since COVID. I mean, and that's part of the reason why we've moved to Enterprise, because they do have a track record of being able to get vehicles delivered earlier. But that has not been the case for this particular fiscal year as we've worked to transition to this program. So we do anticipate that that will improve in the next fiscal year. And then as far as our assigned account manager, our staff did identify that there was a lag in communication several weeks ago, maybe even prior to that. And I don't know the exact timeline for that. But they did start conversations with Enterprise about needing improvement in that area. And a couple of weeks ago, they did assign a new account manager, Tyler, to us. And our staff has seen much improvement in communication. And I know that this is something that Enterprise prides themselves on, is their communication, and something that they are very focused on ensuring that there are not problems with that continuing. We've also implemented the maintenance program through Enterprise, and that too is a transition. But the feedback that I've received from staff, and I know in talking with the sheriff, they've had a positive experience with the maintenance program so far this fiscal year as we've kind of eased into that. So that will be in place moving forward as well. So that's my summary, and we did invite Enterprise here at your request to be able to share any additional information with you.
I'd like to ask Sheriff Wilburn, how's your department holding up with the, being that you don't have the cars that I think you were expecting to have?
I'll let Mickey, uh, he puts up our fleet.
Come on up.
So in this, it hasn't been, as you could say, a cakewalk from the beginning. There have been some hiccups since the, since Garrett has come in and we have assigned a, a new director for our, our fleet through Enterprise. The communication has absolutely opened up. The, the past two to three weeks speaking with Garrett, we have been able to identify problems from the get-go, and those problems have been addressed right to the point that, I'll use, for example, two nondescript vehicles I need for our DA Task Force Officer and Narcotics Investigator. Friday after a Zoom meeting, up until six o'clock that night, I was getting responses from them. Here, here's some quotes, are these viable options, right to, we walk into the meeting this morning, and I'm getting quotes coming in for viable options that are actually cheaper than what we had signed for. So me knowing the industry, I'm not going to get that from, from another vendor. That, that line of direct communication has, has been phenomenal so far. And I do feel, as, as Ms. Kathy stated, that as we move forward into next year, being able to get vehicles ordered earlier, that will help circumvent some of the, some, some of the other issues that, that we've seen since COVID as far as getting specific patrol vehicles in. And it's too early to really tell on the, the maintenance side. I do like the platform. I absolutely love the platform there. That, that's one of the, the, the biggest points that, that Enterprise has brought in for was the maintenance. The way that things have been working since, since July 1 with a couple of our vendors who are in the system, I'm seeing real-time things that are coming in for the vehicles, the needs for the vehicles. And coming into the next fiscal year with this maintenance plan, this build, and the platform that we're using, we'll be able to identify faster the main vehicles that, that we need to rotate out. So I do think that in, in the, the next fiscal year and thereafter, we'll start seeing a, a lot less expenditures on our, our vehicle maintenance with staying with this. So yes, things have been, been lumpy with the inception of it. It's new. But some things are starting to roll now that, that are showing positively for me. So if, if that.
Yes, I appreciate it. Just looking at your perspective on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kathy, could I go back to one of your comments a minute ago about orders not being on time? Are you placing that burden on the county? Is, is that our problem?
So our orders were submitted at the time that Moving Forward with Enterprise was approved by the commissioner. So that was not as early in the season as it would be the next time around. Now that we already have an agreement in place for Enterprise, we can get our orders in earlier in the budget year. They will go ahead and place orders even before our budget is approved. And for certain vehicles that they might be able to resell if we don't end up purchasing them through the budget process. That's a way to move the ordering process along further. But we were not able to do that this year since it's our first year in the program. We were not able to have as much advanced preparation in working with them on finalizing those orders because we were doing everything at the same time once the budget was approved. So it was just a process.
That being said, the program that was presented and $1.2 million, and the lead time that you had, I will say I'm disappointed that we, we ran into that roadblock, stumbling block, hiccup, whatever you want to call it. So I'm a little bit disappointed and frustrated that, that these gentlemen didn't get the cars they thought they were going to get within the timeframe that they thought it was going to happen. So that to me is, is a little disappointing on our, on our part. And as well, I don't feel that Enterprise communicated with you and us as should have been early on because we had a presentation, and I banked on that. That's what we should get. And I know there were some, some issues during that time, but there was, in my opinion, a great breakdown in communication there. And I understand the part of the account manager that may have had some issues. Maybe she lives in the western part of the state. I don't know. I think something related to that. I'm not sure. But that goes back to the corporate level, and I don't feel the county got a, got a good, good response there from them. Someone should have been here on Enterprise's behalf, speaking about and addressing those, those issues. So I'm disappointed along that line. Now, what I would like to hear is, we are halfway through a budget year, and we still only have three vehicles, I believe. So how is that going to transition from this current number of vehicles into? February won't be long after these holidays, and you'll be in budget discussions again. So what's going to happen there? Because am I right in saying that we were expecting possibly 29 or 30 vehicles in the next cycle?
Well, and I can let staff as well as fleet update you on, on where things are in the process because we are moving forward with those. So I will say that we have had regular communication with Enterprise and, and have kept things moving along throughout this process. They have been very responsive once staff had shared concerns about the lack of communication. So I do want to acknowledge that. Tracy?
I want to, hi, good morning. I want to let you know that about two weeks of the delay in communication is my responsibility. Garrett reached out to me to do a check-in, if you will, but I was deep in the throes of budget. And as you know, I'm understaffed in finance, so I told him that I would call him as soon as the budget was finished, which we did. And the moment I called him, it has been off to the races since. Everything has started moving. To address your point about the cars, that is one of the things that is moving. We are currently in the process of reviewing the DocuSigns to complete all the orders for all the vehicles that we were promised. I haven't signed, I haven't pre-audited, and I haven't forwarded them to the manager yet, but they are in process.
Okay, so once that's done, what do we expect in, on the, on Enterprise's?
That'll have to let them address with the timeline. But as far as your concerns about the budget, before we get deep into the budget for next year, I expect that we'll have these cars.
Okay. Thanks for your expertise.
Yes, sir.
This surely has had an impact on our contract.
Our contract with Enterprise?
Yes.
No, sir.
Do we pay them X amount per year?
No, we pay them for the vehicles.
So we give them no money till we get a car on site?
Yes, sir. We do not get invoiced until the car lands ready to go.
Good job. Thank you.
Do you want to speak to how far along?
Yeah, absolutely. Hey, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thank you. My name is Garrett Sears. I'm the area sales manager here for Enterprise Fleet Management. The first thing that I want to do is I want to apologize about the level of communication that you guys received at the beginning of the partnership. Under no way is that an acceptable form of communication that we would approve of. So one of the things that I would like to do, and I'm not going to make an excuse for a previous employee or anything like that, but to Tracy's point, one of the things that I did was I reached out after a few months of partnership just to make a standard check-in call. And I do that with every new account that we have over the first year of partnership multiple times a year. And this just happened to be one of the first ones I was able to reach out. And as soon as I did, she let me know that she's got a lot of good information that she wanted to share. She put me in touch with Ray. And I uncovered the communication issues that you guys let us know about. And since then, to use Tracy's words, it's been off to the races. We've since solved all of those issues. The one thing I would like to mention outside of communication is the vehicle delivery piece. You bring up a really great point. As soon as the vehicles are ordered, they will be placed. And then you don't pay on anything until they are actually delivered. We're going to be coordinating everything that Devin has previously mentioned to you guys in the past. Another thing that I should mention is that we've been working with Mickey on some, what's the unit called?
I go by nondescript.
By the nondescript vehicle. So since we started, since we reopened that line of communication and reestablished the expectations that you guys should have of us, it's been very, very quick. I've had numerous conversations with Ray, with Mickey, with Tracy about what you guys should expect of us and what you experienced at the first part of the relationship is not acceptable, which is part of the reason I'm here. So that said, moving forward, you should experience a higher level of customer service than you have in the past. I'm not going to speak to the transition or anything like that. But that's part of the reason that we have the team in place. But from a delivery, I'm going to get back to the vehicle delivery perspective. All the orders should be finalized, I would imagine, this week. And we'll be able to move on those as soon as we get signed quotes. As far as starting the partnership to where you guys don't experience this in the future, y'all are now, we're now an established vendor. The relationship has been established, right? So whenever you come in to the start of a partnership, it's something brand new. Everybody's trying to relearn communication styles, what's your level of expectation, et cetera. So that way, nothing gets missed, nothing falls through the cracks. Obviously, something did here, but that's no longer the case. So moving forward, what you should, what you should, guys, I'm sorry, what you guys will experience is a stronger level of communication with more proactive planning. And on top of that, we already have the next year's budget meeting planned and scheduled for July, I'm sorry, for January. So that way, we won't come into the planning year right in the middle of it and have to execute it from kind of like behind the eight ball. Now we'll be able to stay ahead of it. But the best part about that is we're no longer going to use the information that was provided to us in the past. We're going to use your actual data. For example, the information that's coming from the maintenance program because it's already starting to be used. So the recommendations and the information that we're going to be using is all going to be your data that we're processing because we're now receiving it. So from a financial recommendation standpoint, you'll have all of the information housed in one place. So that way, we can stay ahead of everything.
Ladies, that was good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. I appreciate your candid response there. And I think all we want as a board is what we, we get what we pay for. And that was better newer vehicles. That was going to improve county services. And I appreciate you coming forward and making those statements. So from a personal standpoint, I expect you to live up to your word. That's all we want. Yes, sir, Ray, come on up, join the party.
Yeah, I didn't want to feel left out. So let me kind of summarize because I guess I was in on the front end of it. And yes, we had some growing pains and what I thought were growing pains with the previous account manager. And probably the reactivity of that was my fault more than anybody else in that I kind of established it, the growing pains, I was communicating with her. We weren't getting results, but hey, it's a new program, so I'm trying to work through it. So I didn't throw up the red flag probably as early as I could have. But as everybody has said, as soon as I threw up the flag about communication not happening, they were all over the top of it and everything has been significantly improved since then. I don't think that the communication issue, even though it had some merit and some flaws throughout, really had any impact on the ordering and delivering of cars. I know I'm being repetitive, but because we couldn't place orders until after the budget was approved July first, you know, this year, what the commitment we've had from Enterprise is that once the order banks, once we decide probably in January what cars we need for the next year, as soon as those order banks open in January, February, March, those cars will go ahead and be ordered. In all probability, some of them may be set and ready to be delivered as soon as we, our budget's approved July first. So that was the concept that we were all looking for. And certainly, we have high hopes for going forward. You know, I realized when we went into it, it wasn't going to happen the first year because we went into it so late in the year. But I do think this year, you know, we've got an opportunity to really excel at what we're doing. Enterprise has proven, you know, with the exception of the account rep that, you know, wasn't dealing with us repetitive, I guess promptly, you know, they've proven to be an exceptional company. You know, that's why we went into the partnership with them. And that's what we're looking for as Commissioner Powell said, in the future, we're looking for results. And I certainly feel comfortable that they'll give us the results. So I feel good about the program going forward. And, you know, I guess as a point, one of the point per people in that program, you know, hopefully I will do a better job of communicating quicker if need be.
Thank you, Senator.
Ray, how many vehicles are you expecting next year? So we've had, what, thirty?
Well, we ordered twenty-eight the first year. So three of the twenty-eight have been received, two more of the twenty-eight have been shipped. And I think the orders, as Tracy said, have been placed on everything else. When we sat down with our meeting, as Garrett said, in January, that's between now and then, Mickey and I'll be working on it. When we start that meeting, that's when we start gauging, okay, how many vehicles do we want for the coming budget year? So we haven't got to that point yet, but that'll be coming up in January.
It looked to me as though it was twenty-nine according to.
To this year?
No, 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 next year.
Well, I think it's to be determined initially, you know, that may have been a number put out there, twenty-eight the first year, twenty-nine the second. And in all probability, it could be, but we haven't defined that yet.
Yeah, okay. Just going by the presentation.
Okay.
Planning analysis, I think, is what it was called. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I appreciate everybody's comment and sharing the burden on both sides of the aisle. And again, it was a big decision by this board to go that route because we upped our vehicle budget from approximately $600,000 to 1.2 million dollars. And that's a big chunk. So results is what we expect and need. And maybe those issues have been addressed here today and go forward. Just keep us informed and keep us in the vehicles we were promised. Any other comments? Board members? Okay, this was just an update, so no action required. No other business. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So do.
Any discussion? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Thank you.